Hey, thank you, everybody. We're moved to item number two, which is called a quarter and we'll start the meeting at five thirty six P M. And we'd like to do a start with a roll call. All right. Commissioner Clement. Commissioner Mead. Commissioner Etchegon. And I am Commissioner Couch. I'm here and like to note that Commissioner Brewer is absent. So, all right, let's move to item number three, public comment. I'd like to start with this statement. A public comment, public comment will be in accordance with the attached policy. This time is reserved for members of the audience to address the planning commission. On items of interest that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction. Of the commission, it is recommended that speakers limit their comments to three minutes each. And it is requested that no comments be made during this period on items on the agenda. The commission is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda. Prior to addressing the commission, any handouts for commission will be provided to the commission. Secretary for Distribution and the Commission and appropriate staff. The public will have an opportunity to come on, comment on items on the agenda. Once the item has been called and the chair opens the item for to the public. With that said, do we have anybody from the audience that like to address the commission? Okay, no, anything? Um, Christie, any emails, call ins? Okay, left to record reflect, we don't have any emails or call ins. All right, let's move on to item number four, approval of minutes. This will be for the regular meeting, May eighth, twenty twenty-three commissioners. Have you guys had a chance to? Review them and do I have any recommendations?
No move to we accept the minutes as written.
Okay.
Second.
Commissioner. Okay. Commissioner Etchegon has. Oh, okay, sorry, any public comment on the, uh, on the, uh, approval of minutes? No. Okay, so we have a first by Commissioner Etchegon and a second by Commissioner Clement. All right, so. Let's do a roll call. Commissioner Etchegon. Commissioner Clement. Oh, sorry, that's for approval of the minutes. And then, uh, I, okay, sorry, and Commissioner Mead. And I myself, Commissioner Couch, uh, that's a yes. Okay, moving on to item five, discussion, potential ordinance changes to encouraging, to encourage housing development.
Good evening, Commissioners, Steve Brandt, City Planner. Got a PowerPoint presentation to help us get through this. So, um, we've talked about this before. Uh, we've got a, a grant to look for ways to change your ordinances to, um, make it. Easier, more efficient way of approving housing projects in the city. And, um. So there's most of what you've, most of what I'm going to show you, you may have seen before. There's a few things we've tweaked since then, um, but. There's, since there's a lot here, if you want to interrupt me on something. As we go from topic to topic, I'm totally okay with that instead of like wait until the very end to go back. So, so feel free to do that. So if we go to the next slide. Uh, the ti- um, timeline where we, where we are so far, we're down at the bottom, um. July tenth, uh, we want to get this wrapped up by September. That's when the grant funding expires. So. Uh, we're already planning on having a. Oh, I didn't add that in there. We're having a, uh. Council study session on July eighteenth. So we'll have, we'll have, they'll have a chance to look at this and then we'll, I'll report back to you if they have any comments. Uh, when we have our planning commission hearing on this on the fourteenth, so the, the fourteenth will be the hearing. Where you'll make a formal recommendation to the council about the changes. So what are we, what are our challenges? Again, I said that the grant needs to be completed by September thirtieth. Challenge number two, um, we're in the middle of a housing element update that's being, um, managed by the county staff. Um, we're doing a combined housing element with the other cities and the county like we, we've done in the past. And so, um. This will be helpful, uh, if we make these changes in making our housing element look better, it'll be easier to get through H C D. So, and that, uh, needs to be adopted by January twenty twenty-four. Challenge number three, these are, uh, what we call arena numbers. Uh, this is the. They're not requirements, but these are goals for what the state believes Lamore should be building in terms of housing. Um, over the next, um. Eight years and I, when I've got that date wrong, it's, uh. Twenty thirty, no, uh, twenty twenty-three. To, I think, to be twenty thirty. So eight years, seven months is the total timeframe this, this time, this time. Go to the fourth challenge. What we're trying to do is make policy and ordinance changes that encourage more housing at all income levels. While also maintaining Lamore's uniqueness and positive attributes. We're not gonna, we don't want to throw out all of our standards because we want to have a, a good looking city. At the same time, we're looking for ways, where can we scale things back, maybe change some things, make it easier to, for people to. Build more homes. So, uh, we're looking at the amendments to maps, which we're going to talk about today, text. Changes to the zone orange, which we'll talk about today. The subdivision changes, which, uh, Public Works is still reviewing and we'll have that to you at the next meeting. Um, but we can talk about today, I can talk to you about what's in it. And then, uh, the fourth one, which was part of the grant, was the V M T thresholds, which the council did adopt on June sixth. So that'll make it more clear on how we're going to be handling, uh, sequa issues for vehicle miles traveled. And, yep. So in terms of the map changes, there's four areas that we're looking at, uh, those are boxed there and I'm going to go through each one. So each, each of the changes requires a change to the general plan map and then also the zoning map. So there's two sets of maps for each. Area. So the first one is Hanford Atlanta Road east of Lamore Avenue. So. The way to read these maps, the, the map in the top right, the aerial photo, the areas in red are the areas that are changing. And so then you look down to the other two maps. You can see what it looks like before and what it looks like after. So we're basically changing from mixed use to office and medium density residential. Um, that site there has a, uh, laundromat and a church and then two sites that are vacant. So there is a potential for a little more housing there on the vacant sites. Um, and this change will not change any status for those two uses. They'll still be allowed uses in the new zone. I didn't mention our theme, our theme for all this is we. We're, we're trying to eliminate the mixed use zone. Um, just because nobody's building in it for whatever reason.
So can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
You're not really changing much. But a name, did that really? Intimidate or, yeah, I don't know what the word is from people from developing the properties or anything?
Well, if you look at the mixed use, the, the. The code, the, the design standards in the mixed use zone are very different from. Um, oh, the other zones.
Okay.
So our, our hope is that by going back to more traditional standards. I think there was a good, there was a good intention when that was set up and. And sometimes good intentions don't come out the way you think, so. So we're not gonna, there's, there's a whole chapter about mixed use. We're not going to eliminate it because maybe we want to bring it back somewhere someday. Um, but, but by changing it on the map. Then you're just saying, okay, here, why don't you try, see if you can build something with, with these standards instead. The second one, uh, is the Lamore Avenue and Cinnamon Drive. There's two large sites. That are vacant, that are zoned mixed use, and we'd be changing those to high density residential. Um, the idea of thinking it'd be multifamily housing and, um. That's similar to some zoning that's already in that area and because it's. It's near two major streets, it's near a lot of services, it's close to downtown. It seems like a good place for higher density housing.
And Steve, is, is that the one on cinema? Is that right next to the school?
Yes.
Is this just west of the school, right?
Yeah. And east of the, of the grocery store. The next one. Is area north of the college. Um, that area is always kind of confused Christie and I on how it's zoned. There's, there's really only three. Properties out there and one of them is owned by the city and we're not sure why it's zoned multifamily. The city site that has the, the tanks and the, and the, so we're. Changing the city site to be for sure C F, which is the blue, that's community facilities. And then the put multi fam or medium density residential. Right next to Bush Street along the call, near the college and then behind it, the low density residential. So you can see the difference between the left and the right maps. And it's no questions on that one. So then the last one is Bush and D Streets. This is, this area is, this is a, this is a good site for commercial development. It's partially built out, as you know, there's a hotel, restaurant. Um, some other uses there. But, but nothing is hap- I think all of those were built before the mixed use came into effect, so. We're putting it back, um, and we, one of the main, uh, prop, there's one main property owner there. We talked to them specifically about this before we. Laid it out. And we've since talked to another property owner there that's also supportive. So this would, um. The areas that are. Along, uh, D Street would remain neighborhood commercial. Uh, there'd be some, well, um, high density multifamily, um, in the back along Bush Street. And then the two sites that are, they're already built, um, the. Uh, the swim lessons site and the fleet reserve are, would be zoned office. And those are still, but would still both be allowed uses in that zone, so. So like I said, we, we have talked to two of the property owners on this area, uh, we. Uh, Christie sent out notices, certified mail to make sure everybody got them on all of these sites, all the property owners. Um, so far, those are the only two people that have, that have contacted us. And they'll be getting. Public hearing notices again for the August meeting. So one of the things we have to do now. Um, by state law is to make sure that whatever changes we make do not result in a decrease in housing. And so we put together this table to show that actually we're increasing. The housing, which is our goal anyways, so, so. I guess I call them potential units based on the densities. Could result in increase in about two hundred thirty-two units, which is nothing to sneeze at. Because we're doing that without adding any property to the city. So those are the map changes. If we move to the changes to residential development standards. We've talked about this before, reducing the minimum lot size. Uh, right, it's been at seven thousand square feet for a while. Most cities have reduced theirs. To either six or five thousand. Um, Fresno went down to four even. I don't know of any other cities that gone that low, but a lot of them have gone to either six thousand or five thousand. And then reducing the minimum front yard setback from eighteen feet to fifteen feet. That's just for living space. Uh, garages would still be set back to twenty feet and, um. Other cities in the valley have, have done something similar and the home builders have, have pretty much redesigned their homes. Since that started happening so that there's more forward freight, maybe it's a front win, a front bedroom. In the front so that that's farther in front of the, of the garage. And then, uh, the side yard setback would be five feet, um, even if it is a two-story building. So. I went back and looked at the subdivisions that we've approved in the last seven years and looked at, because if you. If you want to be less than seven thousand square feet, you have to get a P U D by the current code. And that's extra step, it, it, it's more effort for this, for the developer. They have to give us more information. And so looked at that compared to. Would they still need a P U D if these changes had been effect at the time? And so it looks like one, two, three. Four, five of them would not have needed a P U D if, um. If these changes were in place, and I think that's, that's more in line with what I see in other cities, that it's only when you've got. Really small unit, um, lots. That the, that the P U D requirement picks it, kicks in. If they're doing, um. A regular lot size, a regular size home, that's, that's kind of standard. Um, then just the subdivision, you're still going to be reviewing the subdivision, so you're still reviewing it. You're just not requiring a lot of extra steps for them.
Question here.
Yeah.
Lacy is, is listed here and we've had. Estimates of how many homes going to be out there. If that lot size is reduced from seven to five, is that going to increase that number or is that number already at? Five thousand square feet?
No, it won't change that because, because their, their map is set now, now that you've approved it.
Okay.
So it's there, I mean. I suppose they could come back and try to reduce some of the areas that have hu- larger lots, but. I don't think they're going to do that because that's, that was one of the things they talked about is they wanted to have a mix of smaller and larger lots, um, just. Because there's, there's a different market.
Okay.
Available there, so, so I would expect that it's going to get built the way that you approved it.
Thank you.
Uh, changes to site plan review. Um, we're making the changes right, right now. You have a major and a minor site plan review. The minor site plans are reviewed at staff level. And the major site plans come to the planning commission for review. So we're proposing to change that to just have one type. It all gets reviewed at the staff level. Um, and then projects that, that need a conditional use permit or a zone change or a general plan amendment or tentative map. Those would still come to you for, for that, for those approvals. Um, so it would only affect the site plans where. The use is allowed and they don't need any other approvals. So went back and looked and I, there's a larger list in your staff report, but just to summarize in the last seven years. Looking at the projects that didn't need a tentative map, which is so basically site. Just a site plan. Um, there were ten miners projects approved by staff and fifteen majors. That came to planning commission. If these procedures have been in place. Ten of those fifteen would have not needed to come to planning commission. So there still would have been five that you would see those and. I think if you look in your shop or you could see and you remember, I mean, you see those are the major projects that we had at the, in the city. So. So this, this might feel like a change. I, I think that in the end. There, there hasn't been, and I, I don't recall the planning commission making any major changes to a site plan when it came before you anyways. So I think we're, we're, we're just looking for ways to, to streamline the process. This also might mean some projects won't have to do a sequa document because everything would just be allowed. Um, so that, that would, uh, same on some time and expense as well. So, actually, go back one. I just want to ask how you feel about that part, because, because I know that's the, that's feel like, oh, you're taking something away from us. Uh, how do you, how do you really, what, what's your reaction to that or does it seem okay?
Um, if I can, go ahead and speak. Anytime, just a concern, right? As a citizen also, is anytime you take it, um, so these approvals would be. I guess you could say behind closed doors almost, right? So sometimes it doesn't give the public a chance to. Air any, you know, if they have concerns or anything like that, it just happens. So that would be my concern is. Not so much taking away from us. There is a benefit to streamlining, right? Making things faster and better. It, it would cost less to whoever's doing it, maybe bring down costs and everything. My only concern would be would the public, with something happened, would there be something that happens and the public said, we didn't get a say in it or anything? So that's my concern. So it just, it's in the back of my mind. It, we, we live in a day and age where social media goes crazy and people say stuff. And so that's just something that you as staff would have to. Deal with.
Will have to deal with, yeah. I don't know what it would be, but.
No, no, no.
That could happen.
Yeah, yeah, you never know.
That could happen.
It is minor stuff.
Yeah.
Right? And we've, I think it's a hundred percent approval, right? So in the last seven years. On the line, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's been a hundred percent approval.
Yeah.
The one, one way to look at that is. The, that's the zoning matrix that's in the stat, in the zoning ordinance that says what's allowed and what needs a conditional use permit. That's, that's kind of your throttle then. So, because if you're saying it's allowed. Then what, then we're saying, okay, then we're gonna, then we're gonna work through it and we're gonna, we're gonna make it happen. So if there's. If it's a use that you're like, you know what, we should be reviewing this, then it should be a you, conditional use permit. And I think we've worked through that before. Now, maps are always going to come to you. We can't approve a tentative map at a sub of, at the staff level. Um, that's usually where you see a lot of neighborhood concern because it's a whole new neighborhood coming in next to somebody. Um, but, um, but no, I, I. I, I think that's probably the biggest. Uh, concern that could happen, the biggest negative that could happen.
Yeah.
And it's one of those things where it's, it's. I, I guess what I would say is just having worked in a lot of cities at a lot of different sizes. As, as cities get larger. They, you do lose some of that control. The staff has to handle it because there's just the, the amount of work increases.
Yeah.
If you were a city of, um. Eighty thousand. We wouldn't be able to bring all of these to you as side interviews. There'd be too many of them.
Yeah.
So. So at some point we have to make a little bit of shift.
Yeah.
At least that's, that's how I, I look at it.
And Lamore is getting to that size now where it's like, it's getting busy, right?
Yeah.
Constantly, yeah, I understand.
I will say yes, and I'll cross my fingers that it keeps, that it keeps happening. Because yeah, we're, we're getting into the prime. Size where people start paying attention to us.
Yeah.
So we're not, we're not asking staff to just decide whatever. We, we're, we're going to. Set parameters.
Yes, so there's still, there's still all kinds of standards in the code.
Right.
Uh, and you'd have some really good design standards, um, some standards that other cities don't have, frankly. Um, and we, we enforce them. And we make people go back and, and change things.
Yes, I think it's something like this. I don't look at that as being taken away as much it is. It just helps. Like you said, just streamline the whole thing.
Yeah, and maybe, if, if I may, one of the reasons, because you'd say we did have a hundred percent approval. If you had seen the first drafts of some of the site plans we've seen. You would, you would see how we've been able to change them before we bring them to you, so.
And a lot of times, of course, it says on their staff recommends, right? It's gone through so much.
Yeah.
Before it comes to us. Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
We've had this discussion a little bit prior meetings. But when you bring something to us, it's really, and it meets the standards that we have, that we've approved, that the council has approved. It's really not our prerogative, say, no, we don't like those standards. We, we want different standards. That's a whole different issue. So if you say that we're going to have street trees and they're going to be here. We've already kind of approved that. And, uh, if we want to bicker about what the tree is, that, that's a different story. So, like, uh, I can't remember anything where we've actually said no. I mean, we've talked about, we didn't like a dirt berm. We wanted some other type of barrier.
Right.
But there was still going to be a barrier.
Yeah.
Man, we, we got to deal with that anyway.
Okay. Thank you for that feedback. Appreciate it. Okay, this one, this one changed from the last time I was going through the proposed accessory dwelling unit ordinance and I was like, this is. This is a lot to read, so I tried to make it into a table. And it'll be a table in the ordinance as well. And so this, this is the PowerPoint version of it. Um, but really there's now, there's accessory dwelling units, there's junior accessory dwelling units. There's the tiny homes, which are the, the really small homes that can be on wheels and you can pull to different areas. And then, um. There's the, what we call multi-generational housing units. Um, that's like what Lennar has, has a number of homes like that, the, where they have a second. It's like a second living space inside the main home. But it doesn't qualify as an accessory dwelling unit because it doesn't have a separate kitchen. So. So the table just shows, here's the requirements for each type. And if you can, if somebody wants to do, add a home to their lot and it meets one of these requirements, then with them, they can do it. So, and in fact, I think there's, there's even a way to have both an A D U and a junior A D U. If you can pull it off and meet both requirements, so. So it just talks about what zones are in. Um, which, what types of lots, how many they can have. Um, whether they can be attached to the main dwelling or detached. Um, go to the next one. Uh, the number allowed on, if they can be on multifamily lots. Uh, whether there is a requirement for owner occupancy, that's one, up until a few years ago, we required owner occupancy. For accessory dwelling units, if, if you, you had to live in either the main dwelling or the accessory dwelling unit, the state. Passed a law saying that cities can't require that anymore. So, we can only require it on the junior accessory dwelling units.
Steve, not to interrupt, did you say the junior accessory, the J A D U has to be attached?
It has to be attached to the main unit.
Really? Okay.
The junior one does.
Okay.
So, I don't know that we've had any. Come in that qualified as a junior yet, but the ones that we do, they all qualify as the accessory. So it hasn't been an issue yet. There's the size requirements, there's setback requirements. And go to the next slide. Setbacks, height, maximums. Uh, whether they have to have a kitchen. Whether they have to have a bathroom, and that was one, just going through the law again, the juniors. Actually don't have to have a bathroom, but if they don't, then there has to be an entry way to get to the bathroom in the main dwelling. And then go to the next one.
Okay, so I have a quick question also.
Yeah.
What is the minimum setback on a A D U from the primary dwelling?
Oh.
Sorry, I had an argument about this last week with someone. Um, what is?
I would normally say it's ten feet, because that's for any, any separation between buildings.
Okay.
Um, so that's, yeah, that's what I would say.
Okay.
But it's one of those, it's one of those weird things like a patio. Because you can attach. Because you can attach a patio cover.
Yeah.
And then say, well, it's just part of the main dwelling now. So it's it's. It's a it's a strange quirk of the building code where it's it's either ten feet or zero.
Yeah.
Because you can still attach it.
Yeah, depends on the fire.
Yeah.
Stuff. Okay.
And then whether uh you have took up to water. And sewer. Um, any additional. Uh, parking requirements. Um, and then whether sprinkler fire sprinklers are required. So then we have a number of other zoning ordinance changes so that the tiny homes. Uh, because that's new to our code. Um, they if they're going to be there for more than seventy-two hours, they have to put skirting around the wheels. Um, to make it look permanent. Uh, the cottage home program, which I know something that's some of the city manager wants to get started is. The difference, a cottage home is going to be an A D U. It just means that. It's a pre-approved building plan that the city has on file. And so that way they don't have to submit building plans. They just have to say, I want to build that one. Um. And that's working. That's working pretty well in other cities. Clovis was one of the first ones in this area to do it. And it there's a lot of other cities that are jumping on board to that. Uh, the S B nine compliance, we've talked about that before. That's where in a certain circumstances, you can actually split your lot. Even though the zoning wouldn't otherwise allow it. So you could put a second house in. So that'll be two main dwellings. Um. So we have some wording in there to say that, yes, we'll support that if it meets the state requirements. Um, we never had a definition for an Airbnb or a Verbo rental. Um, so that's going to be put into the ordinance now. Um, it'll be in allowed use. Um, but then that opens the door for other things like um charging them.
Uh.
Hotel tax. Um. Making some modifications to daycares uh requirements just to make in line with state law. And um. Clarifying that. Any decisions that the staff makes, including the cycle interview approval can be appealed to the planning commission if they don't like our decision.
How often does that happen?
I don't remember it happening here.
I I don't remember it happening.
No.
Okay.
We've had people. Yeah, they've 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 appealed your decisions to council to counsel. But I don't think I've had any. Staff appeals.
Okay.
I've seen it in other cities where somebody just totally disagrees with the staff interpretation. And so that gets appealed to the planning commission, then they decide. How to interpret. Uh. Subdivision ordinance. So um. The subdivision ordinance, I don't think has been updated in quite a while. Um, so what what I did is I had one of our um surveyors, because we're the city surveyor as well. Q K is. Had one of our surveyors uh go through the ordinance. Um, she's she's really good at the code and she's one of the people that reviews the final maps. That come through here. So she knows. What she wants to see on those maps. And so. Um, she made she made a number of updates. A lot of them are really technical and 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 minor things, but they but they bring it. The code into what? Is happening currently. Uh, with subdivisions. And so I just highlighted some of the main things that would be changed. So um. Having a clear updated list on exactly what needs to be required on a map. I know that's really important to the the surveyors preparing the maps. Um. We added a chapter to simplify the process. If somebody, if the same person owns two lots and they just want to merge them together, we've got a. We've added a simpler process for that they can do that. Um. We put in the standards for that S B nine, the urban lot split. So that uh. Somebody doesn't think that, oh, just because the state says I can do it, they can just turn in a map on a napkin. And and do it. Say, no, you you still have to. Meet certain survey standards. Um, when you do it. Um. We put in a requirement that developers that are. Drawing final maps, give us the AutoCAD files. That's going to make it easier for us to keep the city's G I S system up to date. Um. And we um. Move the there's language. There was language in there about what needs to be on the maps in terms of signature blocks, who needs to be signing it specifically, what it needs to say. We're moving that out of the ordinance and putting it into a standards booklet. Um, because that changes often, you know. A few years ago, it was Judy Paulwell signing. The maps and now it's Nathan signing the maps. And so um that way, if we we can change it without actually having to change the ordinance. Or in the case of we just never really did change the ordinance and it was out of date. So. That'll make it easier. And then um. We updated it to recognize all the state approved time extensions and opportunities. So. Um. So that's what you'll see in the subdivision orange, but those are those are the real. Big um changes that that I think are all positive changes. I think that's it. Um, it says a lot of same thing, but if yeah, if anybody has any questions, we can pull up the staff report or talk about any anything.
Any questions from anybody? I have a question. The S B nine, you're talking about splitting a lot. Let's say somebody builds an A D U. They want to make it two primary dwellings. Let's say the lots at seven thousand square feet. They can split it, let's say, right down the middle. If they need setbacks. And now you got two different lots at thirty-five hundred square. Really? And that's that's the state law or?
It's a state law. It surprised a lot of cities when it when it passed. Yeah.
So once they split that lot, it's it's an. A separate lot. It can be sold.
Can be sold separately. Yeah.
Really?
And so that's why we wanted to have some things in the subdivision ordinance. To make it clear. That no, we still want a surveyor to set property corners. Um, so that so that you so that it's very clear where the lot where. The lot that somebody's buying is.
Gotcha.
Specifically located. So so we have, because that was something that wasn't very clear in the state law. It just said, oh, yeah, you can do it, but it didn't say. But you still need to follow standard subdivision procedures, technical procedures. So.
Hmm.
Adding that in. Um. So far, we have not gotten any inquiries about that. And um. From what I've read. It's not happening on a lot. Around the state. It's where it's happening. It's happening. On older subdivisions with small homes on large lots. Because there's room to split.
Yeah.
The lot.
Okay.
So Steve, going on what? Commissioner Couch was just asking, so. If they split that seven thousand square foot lot. Is there a maximum? Square footage that they can put? Per unit?
Um.
They still have to follow the setbacks.
They have to follow the setbacks.
Okay.
Now, I think they the state says we can re- we have to reduce the setbacks to four feet. On the side and the rear. Um. So which I think is really tight.
Four feet between units?
Or between unit and property line.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. But there again, it's one of those where it's like, well. That's what the state says we have to do. So.
Yeah, he's saying it can get tight in there. I don't know. I don't know if anybody would really want to do that, but there's people out there that might. Yeah.
I see some. Lots in Haverford. Just east of the hospital.
Mm hmm.
On Seventh Street that they've done that too.
Mm hmm. Yep. Down in Corcoran, when I was there, there was. Well, it was a P U D with horribly small lots and it kind of actually turned into a nightmare. We had one catch on fire. Yeah, it was a nightmare. So any more questions from commissioners? So on recommendation. See if anybody from the public, I know this is a discussion only, if anybody from the public would like to ask questions or anything, they can at this time. Okay. Well, thank you, Steve. Really appreciate it. Uh, let's move on to item number six, director's report.
You're doing commissioners. So not a whole lot to report up on. Um, would like to put out that Jay Salyer's last day with the E D C and J T over there. After I believe twenty-six years is this Friday. So um they're searching for Jay's replacement. And then we've we're working on second submittals for the housing project for Wathen over by the high school in the orchards. They're getting ready to pull the trigger on that. And then Lennar over by the college pulled, I believe, eighty permits just before our fiscal year end. Uh, a few weeks ago. So we're getting them all in. So they're going to get going on and starting to build the houses over there. So. Things are going. Um. Our retail strategies, that is the economic development group we that the city. Um, has hired to help us in economic development. They just went to the I C S C in Vegas last month. Um. They met with. A potential six restaurants that are potentially looking at coming to Lemoore, a couple hotel chains that are looking at Lemoore. Um, as. Possible. And then they have potential people that said, yeah, we're looking, but we're not interested now, maybe in a year or two. And that was like. A a market type business, another restaurant and things of that nature. Still no movement on the Kmart. Got calls into the owners of that one to find out what's going on with Benderson. I do know they've. Denied a few uh offers to sell the building. I've heard up to three or four times now. So. Um, that's concerning. So I got a a call in to to figure that one out. But uh. That's it. Thank you. Have a good day.
Excuse me.
Well, we have questions.
Question, what type of restaurants?
Uh, they range from fast food to sit down. But because there are still all the planning, I I can't say names. So um I have to be very, very brief. Um, I do have that data, but it's still confidential at this point.
Or chains or?
Uh, on all of them. I know exactly who they met with, but until they submit applications and it's still it's still confidential. So. Um, we hold that close to the chest until it actually becomes till we get an application, then we can disclose who it is. But. It it's a wide range, like I said, from fast food to some nice, nice sit down and a. Kind of more of a family and adult type. Venue. So.
I have a quick question about the cottage. So how many different plans you think you'll come up with?
I think we submitted, we're doing four, aren't we? Are we talking about doing four? I'm I'm kind of following uh. Kalinga's. Ordinance on this one. They have four options. So they're they're basically pre-built. They're already approved through the city, through everybody. So if they want to build that A D U. They just walk in and say, I want to build this. It's like going into. Almost like going into your builder when they have all their model homes and they they have it ready to go. And you say, I want you to build me this house. But everything's through the approval process with the city. So once they buy the lot, they can just pull permits to go into building. But there'll be four different types and those those will come through. We'll share them with everybody. Get input on them, but they'll they'll meet the code.
Are those just for A D U's not for actual? Um, main dwellings, like if somebody buys a five thousand square foot lot?
These are just for A D U's.
Yes, yes.
For the A D U's.
I got you.
Yeah.
Okay.
To make it.
Size ones.
So there's parameters in the ordinance how they got to be, but I think with eight hundreds. Small and and depending on the A D U's and where they're going, if they're outside or inside the dwelling, it could only be a certain percentage of the. Overall space of the house. So we'll make sure um what we're looking at would be. A detached A D U on the property. It would be separate from the home and have its own set. So as long as that. That model fits within the parameters and the setbacks, we would just take it straight to a building permits.
Hmm.
That's kind of the plan at this point or the 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 goal at this point.
But it still would be you choose one of these. You can't design your own, right?
Right. No, you could. I mean, you can still design your own A D U. You just have to go through all the processes.
Okay.
This would be a streamlined version of it that if. We have these four pre-approved accessory dwelling units. If you like one of these and they fit on your lot. Then you can bypass the cost of going through design and hiring somebody to design. You can just come into the city and say, I want to build this and. We'll hand you the we'll hand you the permission to build it.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. And thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item number seven, commission reports or requests. Commissioners, anything? No?
Hmm.
Okay, well, before we adjourn, I'd like to say some. I would like to appreciate all you guys coming. Um. We're kind of a small group right now. We need everybody here, uh, especially with the next meeting so that we can move on. I think we had that grant deadline. So April, sorry, August fourteenth, August fourteenth. And um I would like to put on appreciation to the staff. I know you guys, there's so much that goes on. Behind the scenes, phone calls, emails. Everything you put it all together. Just to bring it to us, just so we can pick it apart. So I appreciate that. Really, I know it's a lot of hours and everything like that. And um. That's all I have. So. If there's nothing else, we will adjourn at six. I am blind. Seventeen P M. Thank you.